... son with you.
Absolutely.
I guess please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Well, the first thing on the agenda tonight is a brief overview of the proposed school budget by superintendent Dr. Christopher Harrison. I guess we've done this since you've been superintendent.
Fifth year.
Fifth year. I was gonna say four, it's time flies.
It sure does.
This is the fifth year. We just think it's great to have one more opportunity for people to see the budget, which they get to vote on, which sound like our budget. So, you know, there's not a lot of people here to ask questions tonight, but there are other hearings, I assume, coming up?
Yes, there's a hearing tomorrow night at the board meeting at 7:30. Won't be a presentation, but an opportunity for public comment. And then we have one more public forum, I believe, next Monday evening.
Great.
So, two more chances after this evening. But thank you, and as the mayor indicated, I will be brief tonight, and certainly will be glad to field any questions that the trustees may have. You know, and I always like to start off as a big thank you, because the village continues to be a tremendous partnership with the school district, whether it's working with the trustees, the mayor, Larry, and the village staff. You know, we can't thank you enough. There's a, I don't even know if I want to say synergy, but there's just, we have a similar mission at the end of the day, and it's to serve our constituents. And, you know, whether it's your grounds department, your roads crew, recreation department with Joe and his team, the police department, everyone is there always to assist. And we couldn't do what we do without your support and cooperation. So, thank you. Our budget this year is pretty straightforward. It's not complicated like it was my first year here in district. So, to save any excitement and anxiety, we are once again under the tax levy cap. But this budget is a little different, because we have two little twists associated with it, and one being the reassessment, and the second being that we're actually looking to expand our board from five members to seven members. And to do so, there needs to be a public referendum. So, on the 16th of May, Tuesday, which is election day for us, there are a couple of questions that the community will face, and one is yes or no on the budget, another is yes or no on one candidate that we have running for a vacancy. And then the other proposition is whether or not to expand the board to seven members. And the rationale behind that is, as you well know, there's a tremendous amount of work involved. And with folks having their own lives, their own families, their own careers, it's quite the challenge to be able to fulfill all the district obligations and have the commitment they would like to have. So, the belief is that with a seven-member board, we'd have more opportunity for the board to be engaged in the community and to kind of share the wealth of the work that's being carried on the backs of few. So, with that said, I'll get into our budget.
If there is a yes vote to expand the board, how would that happen?
So, there would be another election. We're actually navigating the legalities around that, because there are, would you believe, actually conflicting laws in New York State?
There is.
So, there's, yes. So, we're told, one set of laws tells us that we need to hold another vote within 30 to 60 days. So, in reading those laws on their face, we are planning to have a vote on June 20th, very much wanting to have the desire to have the election before folks head off into summer vacation land, knowing that much later than that it's going to be difficult. However, there's another set of laws on the books which speak to the requirements for us to publicize and post the details for the vote, which don't align, which require a certain amount of notice that doesn't align with the other. So, honestly, right now, New York State School Board, State Education Department, as well as our attorneys, are trying to figure out how we do this. So, we're hopeful that in the next couple of days, we'll have these answers, but as you can imagine, Elaine in my office is pulling her hair out, trying to sort out the details with all of them. But as soon as we have those answers, we are going to obviously publicize that, because we definitely want to have engagement to make sure that we have, you know, public say in who these new trustees will be.
Can I ask about the May 16th? Is this a contested school board member seat?
No. No, the race is not contested. We have one trustee, Mr. Whitney, who is elected not to run again after serving two terms, six years on the board. Certainly grateful for his service. We have one candidate running for that seat, which is Maria Kashkin, who is well-known to the community for all her involvement. Maria did serve on the board in the past, has taken a couple of years off, and is now coming back. So, just, so I'll quickly go through a quick overview. We've had quite a process in the public eye, all discussions that you see before you that started in January 10th, all at public Board of Education meetings. But before that, as you can imagine, and you know from the village side of things, the work begins well before that, back in October and November. Tomorrow, as you can see, we have the budget hearing, and of course, then the vote and trustee election on May 16th, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Main Street School. All of our work with the budget has tied to our strategic goals. You can see them listed before you, and when you look at our budget and all of our work, you can see direct linkage to all of them. And generally speaking, these are our vision statements about what we believe in for our school district. These are goals that have been informed through a public process last year with strategic planning, where we had a number of community members, students, and staff involved in helping formulate these goals. In doing so, we're making sure we have this alignment, that we're always focused on our students and what our needs are. So, our needs go, of course, well beyond our kids and their future, and making sure we're providing them with great programs, but maintaining the facilities, which is the community's investment on an ongoing basis in our schools. You know, we just can't look at our proposals in a little snapshot. We have to think of long-range impacts on kids and district finance. And in doing so, we keep in mind tax cap. We want to be mindful of the impact of the school budget, and always trying to balance that with what the real needs are, to have top-flight schools for all of our kids. And in doing so, you know, we're hindered by a tax levy cap. And what's a challenge for us this year is that we have a pilot that's expiring. So, when we look at our tax cap, well, it's much more favorable than we saw a year ago. A year ago, we actually had a negative tax levy cap in Irvington, a negative $37,000. And it was based upon two factors. You look at the second line, the assessment growth factor, so looking at the growth of our tax base, and that was a 1.00. There was no measurable growth within the school district. And then the other, of course, was CPI, Consumer Pricing Index, and that number, where you can see a 1.0126, last year you add another zero in there, and it was 1.0012. So, we had no measurable growth. And then when you look at our tax base actually shrinking and the impact of tax certs that we had, we actually could raise fewer dollars than we had the prior year for 1516. So, this year, you can see we have favorable notes, data here, in that there was some inflation, there was some growth to our tax base, but the complicating factor is that we had one pilot, $689,000, that is coming off the rolls. So, it hurts the district from a revenue standpoint, because that gets subtracted from the bottom line. If it wasn't for that, we'd be able to increase our tax revenues by $1.5 million. But since that comes out as a revenue for us, it goes into the tax base. So, it helps lower the actual tax rate, but it also, in this year, deducts from how we can grow the tax base. So, rather than the 1.5 million figure, we can raise our tax base by just over $800,000. Just an overview of our proposed budget, and you can see some line-by-line variances. And you can see there aren't any great gains here. In the one area where we see some good gains, there's some adjustments in one-time aids that we're seeing from the state of New York generally, where they, we get all these promissory notes over the years about when they're going to pay us on past building aid, and a bunch of them are maturing this year. So, it's some one-time revenue that we see there. The one thing that I think is notable, we're reducing the amount of the fund balance that we're appropriating to support the operations, because we can do so with a more generous tax cap. So, you see a reduction there, and it's at a figure of $422,000, which we're confident that we can maintain support for next year. And then expenditures, when you look at this, like any kind of operation in the public sector, we're looking at about 70% of our dollars going to support people. And the rest goes to utilities and some educational supplies here and there. An overview of the budget, just to see how it's broken out by individual category. And then, you know, despite it being a relatively lean, increasing it by, you know, a little over a million dollars, we're still finding opportunity to expand opportunities for our kids. And when we look at these initiatives, a lot of them are really tied to things that have been reduced in the past. One thing that you've heard me say over the years is that we had some real difficult years with significant cuts and reduction in program. And I've been striving to find that opportunity to build programs and restore those services to kids where they're still needed today. So, what you see before us here today is some opportunity to restore some things and little bits of growth. A K-5 literacy coach, which is a professional that worked with our teachers to enhance their literacy instruction in elementary school, that's a restoration. We're looking at growing our STEM program, which is a new initiative, one more year, something we've been building upon each of the last three years. The library media specialists at the campus. Generally speaking, schools each have their own librarians, and a librarian does a heck of a lot more than just check out books. A librarian is a research partner, they teach teachers and... And when our campus was constructed, we were supposed to be adding another media specialist or librarian, but due to budgetary constraints, it was never done. And to think that we have Main Street School next door with 200-some students that have their own media specialist, but a campus with well over 1,000 students that only has one, you can see there's a certain need. So, this is a great advantage for us to be able to add that. Also looking at a music department, it's a department that's seen a cut of two staff members over the last decade, and to the point that our high school band teacher has a responsibility for 300 students. So, we're looking at adding some part-time support to round out a part-time position that we have. When you look at some of the other initiatives that we have, we have students with special needs. And students that if we're not able to serve their needs in our district, we have an obligation to educate these students. But what we're doing, and many school districts do, they're sent to other school districts or other special schools to receive programming. And of course, we have to pay for transportation costs and tuition expenses, which sometimes well exceed $100,000. So, we're actually growing a couple of programs internally. So, there's some expenses here in growing these programs, but they're well offset by the tuition savings that we're seeing. So, one example that we're spending a couple hundred thousand dollars in hiring staff to run a program internally, but at the same time, we're saving about $750,000 beyond those expenditures by not having to send children to other schools. So, it's great for our kids, in that they're in their home community with their friends, and not having to get on a bus to go somewhere else.
So, just, I think it's just wording or semantics, so students in need is not...
Academic, yes, developmental needs, yes. Students that we'd say have an IEP, that receive specialized services.
That's clear from your explanation, I just wanted to make sure people...
Yes. And then we're looking at areas where we've had reductions, where we have large class sizes. Certainly in a district like Irvington, we don't want to see class sizes of 27, 28, 29 students, so we're adding some part-time staff to reduce that. Investing in technology, more devices for our students and teachers, additional funding for student clubs, and of course, investing in professional development. We have a real eye to our facilities with some ambitious plans for maintenance. And obviously, one new item that was worth noting is that now that we have our new Mazara's Field online, with the organic infill, rather than the crumb rubber that most communities have, the organic infill breaks down over time, so we have to invest in replenishing that each year. We have a concern, as always, to make sure our schools are as safe as possible, so we're going to add an additional security guard that will be, rather than fixed to a desk in our secondary schools, actually moving around the campus to ensure that the facility is safe. And then we're going to be auditing our transportation routes for efficiency to see if there's opportunities to shorten routes or to save some money for the district. It's just an overview of budget trends over past years, and to demonstrate that this year's budget-to-budget increase of 1.32% is certainly a very responsible one at that. The challenge that we have is looking at the comparisons. In past years, you may recall, I've done comparisons of analysis of a $500,000 house, a million-dollar house, what it looked like last year and what it looked like this year. Well, because of the reassessment, we can't do that any longer. We have to let a couple of years of trend data build up before we can make such comparisons, because as we know, in most cases, that 500 or a million-dollar house last year is not the same house this year. So, the most simplistic way to do it is this simple equation. Folks can do the math on their own, multiply it by the rate, and you'll get what your taxes are, and you can compare it to your own tax bill from last year. We have a tax calculator that we put on our website, if you don't feel like taking out your own, but we have that available as a tool for the community. One thing that I think is important, just as a reminder to the board, but also to our entire community, is the importance of passing the budget. Because if we don't pass a budget, the board has two options. One, they can let the results stand as a fail budget and go to a contingent budget, or they could go out to vote again with the same budget or modify the initial presentation. And in doing so, if we fail in either of those scenarios, we have to go to what is referred to as a contingent budget, where we actually roll back the hands of time and can only fund to the level of last year, which if you remember what I said about the tax cap levy before, was less than it was in 1516. So, it's actually, the budget would be less than it was two years ago, however, with two years of expenditure increases. So, in doing so, there would be significant cuts in the district. And one thing that, to speak to our partnership, is that we are not, by law, not permitted to allow public to use our facilities free of charge. So, that's recreation programs that come in to use the gymnasiums or the fields. We can't allow our custodians to be there for that, and we would have to start to charge. We should have major impact in all the cost structures throughout the community. We're not allowed to expend money in equipment, so that's no new custodial supplies, no new technology in the schools, and we were not able to deal with any capital improvements unless it's an emergency. So, in doing so, it would really cause quite a hardship in the school district and have a tremendous negative impact on our students' experiences. But with that said, there's a couple more opportunities coming up. As I said, on Monday, the 8th, on the campus presentation room, we have one last opportunity after tomorrow's board meeting to answer any questions that the community may have. And as always, we're here to field questions, whether in person, over the phone, or you can send an email to budget@irvingtonschools. Thank you.
Very, very glad to have you.
Well, good luck. We do appreciate getting our own personal version of the budget presented. Now, obviously, if people have questions after seeing this, or they watch a replay of it, you know, email budget@irvingtonschools.org, and I'm sure we'll get a quick reply, so...
You absolutely will.
And don't forget to vote.
Thank you all very much for your support.
Sure.
Good to see you.
Likewise.
Want to stay?
I have another meeting. I'm sure you're heartbroken.
Suffered enough, no.
Thanks, you too. Thanks. Next up announcements, first one is Memorial Day Ceremonies and Parade on Monday, May 29th, which is Memorial Day, incidentally, at 10:45 a.m. at the Main Street Memorials. Hopefully, we get better weather this year than we had last year. I actually, I have two possible speakers, so I didn't have the update on that, but I reached out to the usual contingent of folks, and I think they came up with two different guys, so, very different, actually. So, I guess I have to make a decision, hopefully I have to make a decision, it'd be a nice place to be. Next is Celebrate Irvington, which is coming up quickly, it's Sunday, June 18th, 2017, which is Father's Day. Is that right? Is that Father's Day?
It absolutely is Father's Day, yes.
Do you want to give a little preview?
Sure. Well, first, maybe Larry Lonkey was going to do this, but before Celebrate Irvington, there is the Spring Fest.
Yep.
Actually, since I was going to give these to somebody, I have them in my hand, so this is in May, so this is coming up first, and this is a great opportunity for the community, as is the one in June. So, I would say go to this first, have fun in the park, and then, the day is a little different, the Celebrate Irvington Day, in that this is a Main Street event, not a parking event per se, but it's still a community-centered event. And just for, because it's six weeks away, I would say that, sorry, Chris Harrison is gone already, but Janice and I have both been working to get as much participation from the schools and the kids as possible, as has Larry Lonkey, actually, and many people. Also, Mark with his contest with the kids, with the PSA. So, all these things are ways to get people involved on that day. But I would put out, for those people who are watching this, two things. One, if you are the owner or know somebody who owns a classic car, we have a plan to bring classic cars on Father's Day to Irvington. So, we've heard from some people in town, and we've made connections to some clubs, but we really do need a few more people that say, absolutely, I would love to bring my classic car, park it in a very careful place in the library parking lot, and have people come on Father's Day with little photo ops and talk about what it's like to have one of those classic cars. It could be a '60s car, frankly, it could be a '70s car. We're expanding from Model Ts at this point, there aren't that many left. And the other thing is, community groups, clubs, neighborhood groups who want to put up a table on Main Street, give something away, show how to do something, have, make anything, creative ideas, make a little game for fathers and charge a quarter, all those things can happen. You don't have to have a special permission license. We'd love to know you want to do it. So, that way, it can be, you know, a pretty exciting day, focusing on history and learning a lot about the people in Irvington who came way before us. So, that's longer than you wanted.
No. Not my expectation.
Okay, that's it on, that's it on Celebrate Irvington.
Perfect. I had two others, one of them was Spring Fest. But the third one was actually, I know kind of you were there, I don't know if any of the other trustees were there, but An Evening with James Hamilton.
Oh, my God, this was the best thing ever.
Was one of the most unique and interesting events I've ever been to anywhere. The fact that it was Cat Cook, I guess the Historical Society was kind of the driving factor, but it was, to me, Liam Oli, who's an eighth grader, who wrote three original songs in the kind of mode of Hamilton on Broadway, but about James Madison, Irvington's Madison.
I hear.
Hamilton, not Madison, I don't know why I do that. But it was unbelievable. Like, it was, and also, I thought that Neil Marr and the high school...
Yes, Eric, Doctor, whatever.
Yeah, Doctor, were absolutely hysterical, playing James Hamilton and Washington Irving. They were great. They were contemporaries, and they were friends, as are Neil and Eric. I thought that the historian was actually interesting. I had actually watched the Hamilton documentary on PBS two days earlier, and she's all over that, and then we had her here in Irvington. So, it was an amazing night. I know that, well, my son was in it, but my daughter also, you know, kind of, it really brought history to life, and I think it, you know, I mean, I think the Hamilton on Broadway has done a similar thing to my family. But, you know, it was such an incredible night, and then Dr. Mosenthal did a great job, but I just was so impressed by Liam Oli and his creativity and his drive, and the hundreds of hours he put into, you know, writing music, working on the lyrics with Dr. Mosenthal, helping choreograph. There was another eighth grader, I think, who did some of the choreography and directing, yeah. I shouldn't have mentioned any names, but I thought I had to mention Liam, really, but it was just an unbelievable night, and they'd had two sold-out shows. They could have had 25, I think, so it was just an incredible experience. I just wanted to mention that. And then, now onto Spring Fest, which is my final announcement. One thing that's a little different is that to help pay for the event, typically, we've asked for donations at the door. This time, we're actually going to charge an admission fee of $10 if you're over 14. And then there's also a kid zone, where that's same as last year, where you can pay to go on the rides and things like that. But it's a, it's a direct way to offset the cost of this, and hopefully help raise funds for, you know, face raise funds for things like fireworks and other community events, as well as kind of the Families in Need programs and things like that as well, as well as camp scholarships and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, it's a great, it's going to be a great day, hopefully we get some good weather. It's May 20th, starts at 2:00 p.m. and runs to 9:00 p.m. There's going to be food, there's going to be rides, there's going to be a lot of music. The headliner is Gil Paris and Jesse Lambiassi, who is pretty well-known, and they're great, yeah, so it's going to be fun. It's something for all ages. This is kind of a more family-oriented one, for Oktoberfest, it's a little more adult-oriented, but it should be a great day.
I did want to add one thing to your very good summary of that Hamilton program. It was, it was free to go, but the Historical Society was, put out a jar for contributions, and I would say that anybody who felt compelled and wanted to make a contribution to the Historical Society, it was incredible effort, both from Pat Bonomi, the historian, and Pat Ryan, the president, and all that. So, it was a great learning experience for kids, and they had so much fun, and the singing was so good. They're not the kids who are always in clock towers either.
No, it was a different group.
It was another group of kids. Anyway, we've gone on long enough.
Yeah. If your family or your business is interested in being a sponsor for Spring Fest, there are still a few slots left, so you can contact me, which I guess maybe I can do a quick update on the fireworks, which I guess we've raised about $14,000. So, we're very close to being able to pay for it, you know, so again, we're accepting donations for that as well, but...
Oh, I thought they were over the top.
We're pretty much there, but now we're in the rounding hour.
Oh, I was sure they reached it.
Mark?
Yeah, well, I've got a couple of things all related to pedestrian and traffic safety, but the most exciting thing, I hope, for kids in the school system, six, open to sixth to 12th grade, is the Second Annual PSA Video Festival, where we're looking for public service announcements about public safety relating to pedestrians. And last year, we had some great stuff submitted, and we had, you know, there are prizes, cash prizes. And anyway, so this year, we were trying to think, help people out, we're talking about two basic themes, one of which is crosswalk safety, stop, look, and wave, and the other is nighttime visibility. And especially with summertime coming along, making sure you can be seen while you're out with your buds at night. Anyway, so all the details can be found on Slowdown Irvington Facebook page, or you can write to slowdownirvington@gmail.com. The contest begins today, actually, and the last day for submitting submissions is June 5th. And then at Celebrate Irvington Day at Village Hall on noon, the mayor will be announcing the winners, and the prizes will be given out, and we'll be screening all of the festival entries and the winners. And later, the winners will be screened on our FiOS cable channel and so forth. So, that's exciting. We had some great stuff last year. And Larry, I'm going to give you, this to you to put up on the bulletin board. So, just to go through a couple of quick ones, there are still these, what do you call them, reflective bracelets, bands, or whatever, from that Phelps Hospital donated to the village. There's still some at the Police Department and in the rec center. I think we've given them, you know, at least two-thirds of them away, probably more. But if you're interested in making a video about a theme of nighttime visibility, pick yourself up a few of these and think about that. And finally, there's other stuff like bumper stickers, and we have a new season of the, this year's, this spring's model of the Slowdown sign, which has gone a little bit retro with the blue sky. It's, I think they're very collectible, but I just want to make a request to you that if you see them on the street, please don't collect them, leave them there, come into Village Hall, go up to Karen and Larry's area, and just ask for some, they're free. Grab one, and, or grab two, keep one for yourself and put one outside somewhere for neighbors and drivers to see. And finally, the last thing is, we're coming into, of course, doesn't seem like it, but soon, we're going to be looking at irrigation. It's been raining quite a bit, but by the time we get through to the end of June, people are going to really be thinking about irrigation. Your water bills, everyone should have gotten one of these by now, this talks a lot about understanding where your water comes from, what the, you know, water, typical water usage. And really, the back of it focuses on, there's some ideas about what you could do around the home to save water. And the back of it is a real, kind of more involved about all sorts of techniques to reduce your irrigation bill. This is something you want to talk to, probably, with your landscaper or irrigation technician. The bottom line, underline it all, is that typically, in the summertime, irrigation amounts to 50% of your bill, it doubles your bill effectively. So, keep that in mind and try to figure out ways of cutting down your use of water. Thank you.
Watering the street or water in your driveway?
That's a lot of it. Water in your lawn that's already wet, that's one of the big ones. There's simple technology that actually allows the irrigation system to bypass when the ground is wet.
Costs almost nothing.
Yeah, it's only, it's really, literally, it's maybe, you know, 150 bucks to get installed.
You have to install, that's the piece is like 20.
Yeah.
Though some comes to clear out your lines or whatever, get it ready, tell them, and put a new one in.
Right. So, that's a rain sensor, there's also a, there's two forms, there's one that... is kind of like an old weather station, collects rain, which is the old version. The newer version, which is, I think, kind of hot, is it actually are sensors that go into the ground that control when your, whether or not your zones will go on, because they actually detect the water moisture. Those are a little bit more expensive.
Yeah.
Anyways, so, thank you.
Anyone else? So next up, we have a correspondence, Caesar Manfredi, Mayor Trustee, under exemptions to the REIT law. Perhaps there should be an exception for commercial properties over X acres in addition to my original letter of just ours as an exception, say one acre. Did that result in an exception for the commercial properties over X acres and a limit of hours for those commercial properties? This way, the exception has a very narrow focus for the properties that actually need the exception. We also received a letter from Field Point that came in after our cutoff, but we'll put it in the next, the next time, in our next meeting. But basically, supporting an exemption for large properties as well. Now we'll go over to public comment.
Over three. Still say we need, you know, a Twitter feed to come in here, so to bring in questions.
We wouldn't go up on the board, but we could read them.
Yeah, you can read them.
Just in case. Next is the consent agenda. Any questions, comments, issues? I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
All fair.
All right.
Next up is Larry's favorite report of the year.
What's your favorite report?
It's my favorite. Well, remember we used to have Mike Ritchie. Mike Ritchie used to come in. He used to be about an hour. We used to go through every, every box. Larry does it in under 40 minutes.
Well, no, that's what I'm, I was going to say, that's what I'm doing tonight.
Yeah, exactly. Every 50 year, we have to do that?
Yeah, exactly.
It's a report.
In my version, I only printed out the one page, by the way, to save the world.
What are we looking at?
Alrighty. So this is the time of year when the village prepares its annual stormwater report. The, the village is an operator of a stormwater collection system, catch basins and such. And the stormwater discharges into the waters of the United States, which is the Hudson River. So as a result, we are required and we operate under a permit that's granted to us by the state of New York in order to do that. So the permit comes with a variety of reporting requirements and, and actual requirements. And the annual report is, is our way of reporting back to New York State DEC. And one of the things I've said and attached to the agenda and on the village's website is a fairly lengthy report that I know you've seen before. And it's, I use the word sterile. It's a very sterile document. It's, but it's, it provides the information that New York State needs going forward. The stormwater report is broken up into minimum measures that they use to determine our compliance with stormwater permit. And there's six of those. And the report is broken up into those six different sections. The sections are public education and outreach, which include things like direct mailings, which is really our sanitation calendar with the information that it contains. Our email list, which we send stormwater information or announcements, even, even announcing tonight's meeting, there was a separate email about this. Didn't do a very good job, unfortunately, getting people here, but it was announced. And that goes to about 1,200 or so subscribers. We also posted on Facebook and Twitter and, and I could go through that. But that's, that's our public outreach. That is documented in this annual report. What I basically said in, in about 30 seconds is documented in about, you know, half a dozen pages or so. There's also a public involvement and participation component, which includes a Trails Cleanup Day that we run, which is important, and the various participants that, that take part in that. And then even just the discussion tonight is considered public participation. So you're, after I'm done.
So you can all cheer when he finishes.
The mayor would be so kind as to invite anyone to make a comment that they'd like. That's our public participation for the evening.
Whether they participate or not.
Right. The third minimum measure is detecting illicit discharges. And some of the efforts in that area include mapping all of our outfalls where water exits into the various streams that collect. And there's a, we have those mapped. We have them monitored to the extent of, to the point where if there is a flow that's observed during a time when you wouldn't expect a flow, like if it hasn't rained for a while and there's water flowing somewhere, it could be a discharge of some sort and that would be followed up on. There were no illicit discharges detected in the last reporting cycle, and that's what we reported here. Fourth minimum measure is construction site stormwater runoff control. We have adopted the state's model law relating to capture of stormwater at construction sites during construction. The report that's in here, only, we're only required to report to the New York State DEC for sites that have disturbance of an acre or more. That doesn't mean that on sites that are less than an acre, there's no stormwater control. It simply means that we don't report to them about it, the number, the, you know, the details about the various activities that are going on. And there were no projects this year. The, Dr. Harrison left already. The school project is actually not under our jurisdiction, but that is certainly more than an acre of disturbance. But we are not monitoring that. That's between them and the State Education Department. The fifth measure is post-construction stormwater management. So this is various retention basins and ponds or wetlands that may have been created or contributed to as part of a development. We have, there's, there's not a current requirement to inventory all of those things that are out there, various retention basins and whatnot. There probably will be in the upcoming renewal permit that New York State issues. But the ones that we do have inventoried, we do inspect. And we did note that we inspected three such basins. And it simply means observing them, making sure that they're functioning the way they should function. You know, a retention basin that's, that's filled up with silt is not functioning the way it should. So, and in which case, we would notify the owners and, you know, they need to make, take corrective action. And that, that happens, you know, not routinely, but it happens from time to time. And the last, it covers stormwater management for municipal operations only. We report back information about how many miles of our streets have been, have been swept, how many acres of parking lots have been swept.
It's extraordinary how many miles we sweep.
Yeah. I mean, it's a, I mean, obviously, it's done frequently, but we, but we accumulate those miles and report that back to the DEC. We report how many catch basins we clean. Incidentally, if you're interested, we do 880 miles of street sweeping. We do about 200 acres of parking lot sweeping over the course of a year. And we clean 722 catch basins over the course of a year. And that's basically it.
So Larry, I have a question about the dam valve improvement. That doesn't factor in at some point, since it's being used to control stormwater flow effectively on Barney Brook? I would, if not, that would have been something that could be leveraged in one of the reports.
Right. It, I mean, if anything, it's a, it's either a detention basin, but, which is really how we treat it, but I don't think anyone's ever called it that.
But it's effectively, it's, you know, peak flow management.
Yeah. I'm not sure where that fits into the, the, the DEC seems to be focused on water quality, as opposed to flooding necessarily, at least the way the, the way this reporting is.
Yeah. It's still a water quality issue as well, when you have that much.
Yeah, I don't see, I'll, you know, I'll ask our consultants to see if and where it could fit into a report like this. Again, it's, you see the report. It's very regimented.
So the other thing was, the report, you and I were texting back and forth about a survey, stormwater survey for residents. And one thing I was going to say to you, I sent an email, but I wanted to say publicly, because I think we should get that, dust that off and look at it and maybe rework it a bit.
Yeah.
And, and make it a little bit more educational in the questions. And I was thinking, as a model, we might also want to look at the one Judy Frimmer made dealing with
Stream.
Stream, stormwater stream flow, you know, stream, stormwater, impacts of whatever, debris and congestion in the stream flow. I thought maybe some of that could be all combined together and maybe updated. So I'm willing to work with you on that if you want to and get it out there, because I think it would be useful for people.
Sure.
So Larry, is there any part of this report that we did not meet the minimum standards or anything that's going to raise a flag in this report?
No, not that I'm aware of. We, we are audited on these from time to time. And actually, we expect to be audited fairly soon. But we're, we're in good shape.
Thanks.
Are we still calling out LELE as part of this?
The only place where that was left out was, I mean, it is mentioned, I believe, in the sanitation calendar.
Because we don't have any public education at this point.
Right. Because of the seminars haven't been run or the demonstrations haven't been run. So we just picked up on the Trails Cleanup Day as being a
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Do you want to go over to the public?
Yes.
Please.
Hi, David Swibel.
Microphone.
Just like to comment that ever since the new houses were built on Riverview Road.
Do you want to get up to the microphone?
Yes.
Do you have a monitor?
No, we don't.
It's the only way it can get documented by the transcriber.
Ever since the new houses were built on Riverview Road, Marshall Pond has been flooding more than it used to. In the last heavy rain that we had, it was overflowing for at least two days after the storm occurred. And it's not the most major problem in our world. But it does, it overruns the, the driveways that go below it and center. And that hasn't been cleaned out in whatever that the overflow structure is there, or probably hasn't been cleaned out for. So I just.
Right. Yes, I've noticed that myself. I might.
You know, it's kind of strange, because also, you know, with the excess water coming off Stern's Ridge that has fertilizer, you know, it's also causing problems in the pond as well in terms of water quality.
Well, there's actually a new circumstance in that area. I had noticed that and the algae buildup was significant after that grass was planted.
Yeah.
Well, somebody decided to put a few fish in the pond. And now we have a pond full of very large koi.
Wow.
Tons of.
So they're eating all the algae?
So they are eating the algae at the moment. Now, I'm not a fish person and I don't understand the good or the bad of these non-native fish in our little pond up there. But at least they're eating the algae and they're not lying dead on the pond. So.
Yeah. They can't get out, though, right?
They can't get out.
There's no real water.
The water is overflowing.
Yeah, right.
Let's save out this there.
But you know, there's one upside to that.
A new restaurant.
Yeah.
You're feeding rocks and
Also, I recently observed snapping turtle about this big in that pond. So the wildlife, actually in that area, is much better than in the rest of the woods. But the new little thing about these, it's, the algae is semi-under control now, perhaps because of the fish.
Amazing.
I have a question about the report also. Yola from North Katonet Street. And I apologize if this is something everyone knows, but why would the recycling schedule be something relating to stormwater? And also, in terms of updating it, how do we make sure that we do put on the recycling schedule the updates from Westchester County and things? I think, for example, last year's didn't seem to have the cardboard milk carton edition on there and things like that. So just, you know, what's, how does it relate to stormwater? And how can we make sure we can make it always updated for our residents?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, the calendar's looked at every year. I, I'm not aware about the milk carton thing, but I can ask the superintendent. As far as why it's on our list for stormwater is simply for the information it provides about the Love and Believing Program, which involves keeping the, the leaves on people's property and not having them enter the catch basins and a variety of other things that impact water quality. So we've always made that connection in the past. So that's, that's what it's on there for. And that's why it's on this report. But I'll look into the milk carton thing for sure. That's usually updated pretty regularly. It's updated every year. And if we miss that, we miss it. But we'll make sure it's accurate.
Yeah, I noticed that milk carton thing. And I, you know, it did, I think it slipped through the cracks. But if there's ever a time when we wanted to send out a little insert about that in some other mailing that we're sending out, it would be worthwhile because it is a new thing. It can go into recycling, which are those cardboardy milk cartons. And they, they don't go with cardboard. That's the whole thing. So it would, it would be worth a little insert.
They go into glass and what?
Yeah, they go into glass and holding those things. So we could probably, maybe if I can think about it with you, Brenda, maybe there's some water bill that would be okay to stick that in there.
I thought they were in paper, not, not plastic.
It doesn't, it's not, doesn't go into paper. It goes into cobalt.
We'll confirm it all.
Yeah.
I vote for some.
Do you see this? I know. We have internal family debates about this.
I just think that's
Right.
Put it in the tax bill.
Yes, we could put it on the tax bill and everybody will be
I put my, it's pretty scary.
Anyway, okay, moving on. Moving on, moving on.
Any, any public comment?
Yeah.
All right. So we'll, we'll move on to dedication of parkland on Hermits Road.
Okay, so
End of the long story.
Yeah. The village, earlier this year, the village closed on a piece of property at the end of Hermits Road. The property comes with a deed restriction in terms of its future use, which it, you know, in broad terms, it says recreational only, so not an active type of a use. But the suggestion here that's in front of you is simply to dedicate this property as parkland, is contiguous with a significant amount of other parkland that the village owns or manages. And, and so that's what's before you, is to make that formal dedication.
I would just say, in conversation with Joe Archino Superintendent, he told me that the Recreation Parks Advisory Committee took that up at their last meeting and were unanimous in agreeing that that should happen. And Nikki, you may want to speak about the Woods Committee. I know that he said they were also in favor of that.
Hey, Mark.
And just to be clear, there's no discussion at this point with this board or, or any of the other committees about what the exact use would be, if any, anything different than just passive and open. So it's simply, no, I'm, I know they have bounds. I know they have
Yeah, it has to be because of the deed restriction. I bet it could just be
Right. But even within that, there's a, there's kind of a list of things. And no one's even talking about what those are at this point. This is simply a parkland dedication. Future use would be obviously governed by the restrictions, but also come from recommendations from
Yeah, you know, trailhead or something like that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I know that the Woods Committee is interested in at least touring the area and getting a
Another koi pond.
I don't think so.
But the, but the restrictions are, it's more than just like a trailhead party. I mean, it mentions a bathroom facility. I don't think anyone's, we're not, that's not under consideration, but that's in there. It's, it is. So.
It's something that could or couldn't be there. It's a restriction or
No, that it's in there as a, as a potential use. As an example of a recreational use. So it's, we're not having that conversation tonight.
No dog run.
Yeah, no dog run.
A dog run.
Well, certainly just having a couple of parking spots makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's a common thing that's been talked about, is at least a, another trailhead.
Yeah, and maybe another
A trailhead, a gravel piece. But, but all we're doing is saying, we own, we own this and we are dedicating it as parkland. Is that what we're, yes.
It's difficult to reverse that, right?
Yes.
Once it becomes
Yeah, it is. But, you know.
Not that I'm
No, 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 I know. But it also doesn't make a big difference. Because if you're historically using something as parkland, especially if it's connected to other parkland, it can be deemed parkland, sort of, you know, without you calling it parkland. And if some And if somebody wanted to challenge you using it for something else, they'd have a good argument that it is parkland and even though you can't find a dedication, then you would still have to get an act of legislature to get it, you know, turned into something other than parkland. So practically, it doesn't make a big difference, except it's, you know, it also makes things a little easier going forward because remember there was some, there was some piece of property that was, maybe one of the cell towers was interested in more, or was declared when it was parkland. It's better to, you know, have a record of it. It'll say, it'll say future management personnel, you're just don't get into a lot of research.
Right. So the answer is yes.
So there's no, we're not really noting or no one has really brought up any downside to this that I've heard to dedicating it, but maybe there is more discussion, I don't know.
Well, a couple of my local deer have a little bit of concern, but...
Your local deer?
Yeah.
Did you want to engage a comment that's...
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Hi, actually, this is the reason I came to the meeting. I'm a pro having it dedicated as parkland, but I just wanted to bring up the significance of this particular piece of property. One of the things in the woods is the Hermits Grave. And I facilitate in person that's been doing the hikes to the Hermits Graves for the little ones and various other people. And I've also been particularly responsible for getting directional signs and trail maps, et cetera, figured out. And the biggest negative comment I get is, I get lost, I can't find it. Where the hell is this Hermits Grave thing? Anyway, what is it? And so there's been a lot of work to try to make that better. Well, the trail that we go to Hermits Grave on now is circuitous and involves a big down and a big backup. And the help part is particularly tough, particularly for little ones. That's not the way the hermit got there. There is a much more direct way, which happens to be across the corner of this particular piece of land that's being dedicated. So this will be huge for ease of access, particularly for little ones to that site if we are now able to actually put in an official trail back there on that way. Likewise, I am very pleased to hear that the restrictions do not prohibit parking space because that's another issue, particularly with little ones, that it is sort of a hike from any distance to get back there. And yet it's a thing that, you know, younger classes would like to see. So a few parking spaces from this location will mean it's like a 15-minute hike to get there rather than 45 minutes and a lot of effort with what it takes to get there now. So my comment is, I'm glad we're doing it. Although I don't believe the Hermits Grave is parkland at the moment. It's not dedicated as that.
My painting painting.
So I would be pro dedicating a little more land of the woods to parkland, just to ensure it over time, as goes on. But good that we can park there and good that we can make a trailhead there and now that it's ours and it's parkland.
Could I just ask you to give your name so that the transcriber has it?
David Zwybel, Woods.
Thank you.
Anything else to comment? So she's saying positive things?
We'll get the new trails.
Nikki Goddington, help side terrace. Forgot that name. I, this doesn't seem very controversial, but I wanted to say that I support making this, dedicating this as parkland and also, as David said, exploring what other village property that's open space might need to be dedicated as parkland. And for the listening audience, I also wanted to mention, since we're talking about trails, that the Urban Woods Committee updated the trail map and it is available at the Recreation Department and Village Hall and it's a way not to get lost on these wonderful trails.
And on the website.
And it's on the website.
Thank you, Stiller.
Well, actually, the trip to the Hermits Grave, I remember going, I think I was in fourth grade with Mr. Ollie. And I actually thought it was like getting to Narnia. You couldn't find it without Mr. Ollie. He was like, he was the wardrobe. But now I can say I can follow the trails and even if it's steep up and down, I, it's great that we can find it because it's such a cool thing. I know, it was something I never forgot as a child and now that you could, I can even find it on my own, it's fantastic. So getting an even better trail there would be great and a more historically accurate trail for the hermit.
How are we going to handle that?
Yeah, exactly. Resolve that the property known as Lot Number Two on a certain map titled subdivision map prepared for making development located in the village of Irvington, town of Greenberg, Westchester County, New York, made by Rakesh Arvahal Land Surveyor and filed in the Westchester County Division of Line Records on January 24th, 2017 as map number 29028 and conveyed by the village by deed dated February 2nd, 2017. It's hereby dedicated as parkland for the recreational use of the residents of the village of Irvington. I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I just wanted to say in passing to give my thanks to both Larry and Mary Ann for doing a great job of making this property deal originally that we approved previously go through because I know it was somewhat touchy at times, but I think this is a really good balance for what the village was facing with that property and the fact that we can now, you know, essentially deed it forward to the community for future use, I think is excellent.
It's one of the biggest roller coasters rides that I've been on since I've been on the board, but I think at the end of the day, it turned out to be a great result for the residents and a lot of the thanks goes to Mary Ann and Larry mostly. You know, I don't think lawyers as particularly creative, but I think I probably should.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly right, but he was a backhanded compliment, but it was, it was a great job and, you know, it's great to have that, that little slice and it kind of fills in a hole in the overall map, so. It wasn't easy.
No, it wasn't easy. It took a long time. I agree, this is a creative endeavor and I'm glad we got this far.
But you know what would be easy? Approving this film permit, I believe.
Oh, maybe not. Who knows? Sometimes you trick.
We have any questions on this one?
Let's see.
Well, it seems to be at the same location that caused the problem and there was a complaint.
This one, this is over. This is April 20th.
Yeah, this is an...
This is going backwards.
Yeah, this, this happened just after your last meeting.
So what, it's, it's just, it's already, we're not going back in time, it's not a second.
It's Narnia and all that, we can do it.
Yeah, exactly. Follow Mr. Ollie. Yeah, this is one that we've already approved via email.
I guess the only thing that came out of it because of the complaint was the notion that we should make sure we're very clear about which neighbors are getting noticed by the production crews, right? So we don't have that kind of misunderstanding again.
What's the film?
It was the HBO show Divorce.
It's going to be filming in River towns every day. It's just, it's great for business. Divorce is good business, I guess. Resolve to approve a filming permit for Onbells Productions LLC for filming at 86 Fargo Lane and 64 Sycamore Lane on April 20th, 2017, from 12:30 PM to 10:15 PM for a permit fee of $1,000. I'll make the motion, can I have a second? All in favor?
This is, wasn't the, the one about eating well?
No. No, it was not.
That was this past...
That was, that was Dogland, like...
I noticed we didn't get any leftovers from the commissary truck.
There's a lot left when they eat out there, you know?
And compost the rest.
This was the portion system. Exactly right. You hungry? Next, there's the approval of contract 2017-09 with Garden State Fireworks, Inc. for a fireworks display.
Well, then I guess we did, we did finish the fireworks.
Well, we had more than enough to cover the fireworks piece anyway.
Oh, okay.
Which is $17,000. Yeah, we have, well, we were talking about my, donating my salary, as of right now, I only have a half a year's salary, so I run again, win again, so. But anyway, but we're gonna, we'll have enough to cover the fireworks.
Okay.
If I lose, I guess I'll have to pay up. Resolve to approve contract 2017-09 with Garden State Fireworks for fireworks display on July 4th, 2017. Authorized the village administrator to execute the contract. I think one interesting thing to note before we vote is the rain date is not July 5th as most people would guess.
Yeah, it's in October.
It's actually going to be during Oktoberfest, so it's going double down on Octoberfest if we don't have, if it rains on July 5th. It'd be kind of cool anyway, so.
Yeah, well, I had one, one complaint about it and that is that I really...
It's gonna be with the display, I could tell.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just want to have more of these, what was the one?
Whistlers?
Yes, exactly.
I always want more whistlers, too.
Yeah, I was reading one of them, I was going, yeah, let's bump that number up now. Just really funny, but...
1900 Flying Fish Whistlers.
That's the one that caught my eye, right?
Yeah. It seems like a lot, though, doesn't it?
Well, it's always, that's my, I always find that the, it's not good English, it's the funnest part, the whole history of...
Yeah, I agree. Well, I also think it's funny, it's kind of reminds me of one of those things on TV, like the total, we're getting $26,000 worth of fireworks for $17,000.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
They're taking a big loss on us, I appreciate that.
That's the number of shelves.
Oh, you're right.
26,000 shelves.
Yeah, you're right. So we're not getting a great deal. Solid or shell? You're right, that is the number of shelves. Anyway, I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
Take it.
All in favor? Not opposed. Paris. Larry, change order number nine?
Yeah.
Town hall, Peter?
Town hall.
Town hall, yeah. Passage.
Passage improvement. Yeah, this is a, well, I don't want to say minor, $11,000, but it's involving the, the treatment of the exterior casings of the windows in order to allow them to accept properly storm windows. So storm windows that are out there are being replaced. There's, there's not enough wood for them to mount on to essentially is what it is, so there's some additional woodworking that needs to happen. This has been on our radar screen for probably a year and a half, but never successfully negotiated it with the prior contractor. So we've known about this for a long time, it's just a matter of actually getting to do it, so.
Did this come about because we said we were going to re, restore the older windows or was it just something?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a byproduct of it.
Because they didn't have built-in storm windows?
Was this the thing you discussed with Earl Ferguson or was that a different thing about the windows?
Well, no, the discussion with Earl was about the storm windows themselves and how they present themselves to the outside. And, you know, I'm confident, I know Earl would like them a certain way, but because of the size of the windows, there's, there's only a certain way that they can work physically. So we, they're being done as historically appropriate as possible.
The best way they can under the circumstances, but yeah, I heard that conversation.
Do they remain in place or do they, are they taken down?
Storm windows, they're up permanently. Yeah, they don't, they don't come in and out, but they, but they can, the bottom half of them can operate.
That's a, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So we can get air inside.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not a bad idea. So this isn't a change order for the storm windows themselves, this is a change order to allow the storm windows to be successfully installed.
Weather stripping and copper pan.
Yeah, all the necessary.
Resolve to approve change order number nine in the amount of $11,625 for exterior casing cost, additional labor for storm install for opening, and additional work for the weather stripping and copper pan at the theater door and to authorize the village administrator to execute said change order. I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Authorization to approve change order number two for the town hall fire alarm system.
Yeah, this is exceptionally minor, there's a description of it on the actual change order itself. I can't say that I know intimately what the details are about. I can tell you that it was necessary to complete the fire alarm system installation and I believe it has something to do with the theater space itself. So it's, it's very minor, like I said.
It's a new relay, it sounds like, that they only discovered whether we're taking out the old one.
Yeah, exactly.
Relay, a relay latch combination.
For the door to close when there's fires, it doesn't spread.
Yeah, exactly.
Same thing.
So pretty straightforward, but our, you know, Jim Englishbee is responsible for the building and for this project was satisfied with the price we got and needed to get done.
It doesn't create any, did the, did the theater manager or anybody, is it, is it physically gonna look like something somewhere in the theater differently?
No, I don't think any changes. It just swaps out something that was there.
I think it's got, maybe it was compatibility issue with the new fire system, the fire alarm system made the old latch relays incompatible, so they had to replace them. But they didn't know that until they got a certain distance down the road. So they're probably not really visible.
Resolve to approve change order number two in the amount of $1,197.50 for door release relays and a new panel for power in Irvington Town Hall Theater and to authorize the village administrator to execute said change order. I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Now, here's a controversial one every year. Issuance of a peddler's permit for Jimmy Softser.
That's the company name.
Hey, you have comments or questions on this?
Samples, I keep saying.
He was at the Main Street School, I was hoping he was listening by. Yeah, we missed our chance.
I didn't hear the bell.
Yeah, he couldn't, he couldn't have the bell until he got approved again.
Oh, that's running it kind of tight.
Resolve to approve the issuance of a peddler's permit to Jimmy Softser to operate an ice cream truck throughout the village for a term of one year and the date of issuance for a permit fee of $100 pursuant to chapter 155 of the village code. I will happily make the motion, can I get a second?
Thanks.
All in favor?
Right. Three for ice cream.
No, work sessions, two items, a review of the latest draft regulating the use of leaf blowers and a review of weight finding design materials. Because I have to see this one here. Is it?
The letter from, you have the point?
I have, I don't have copies for everyone.
Is it it?
No, this is the actual one, so.
I can share mine with some if you want to give them to the back. Is that...
Someone could have mine, too.
Sure. Yeah, I want to. And then also, you saw circulated today was a letter from the Field Conference Community Association. I don't have extra copies of that, but what their concerns are. So when last we left, you had a work session in April where the leaf blower law was kind of resurrected, you talked about some issues and what came out of that meeting was a new draft of a law. That's what's in front of you. You've gotten some correspondence in the past couple of weeks. Most of it, I shouldn't say most of it, some of it has been from those people who are associated with larger properties, especially commercial properties like Half Moon Co-op Apartments, for example, and even others on Broadway, asking for some relief relating to their properties. And we've also gotten a number of pieces of correspondence from residents who are equally concerned in the opposite direction of wanting to enact some regulations and expressing their concerns. So with that, I, I don't know, you know, I want, we wanted to try to get a little bit of a jump on this so we can try to get a draft if there's going to be a revision to it, try to get a draft out there and try to get a public hearing scheduled on it because I think there's some desire to have, if you're going to be doing something, to have something in place by the end of the spring cleanup season, right? I mean, that's...
Yeah. Well, it's almost, so I just had one, you know, kind of typographical or jotographical, I don't know what the word is. It says, "A new paragraph 10 to subsection 9," but numbers 9...
What happened was I took the previous draft and it was 9, but we added a section because we added the thing for Rock and Mole, so...
Okay, so that's fine, as long as I...
Yes, no, I did.
Because then I got confused at section 2 where it accepted subsection 10 and I was going, huh. 'Cause then, I got confused at section two where it accepted subsection ten, and I was going, huh, whatever.
So what should we be changing?
Nothing, it's just...
It's just...
Oh, it's just...
Remembering, yeah, that's what I said, it was kind of copy edit more than anything.
Because in fact, if I look at my code book, the next section is nine, but the code book did not include the new...
Blasting.
The blasting thing. Now it does, we get different pages.
So Larry, you proposed something about saying that an exemption for commercial properties, you mentioned.
I mentioned it, yeah.
Yeah.
But now, would you actually call them commercial property? I don't know why they call them commercial properties, you're talking about large residential properties, right? Oh, I think commercials are very confusing, because that's not a commercial use, it's a residential use, it's confusing. Just define it.
Well, but I think, I think where that came from was the notion that they are technically commercial entities, because they're corporations. I realize they're residential use.
Yeah, I know, but I know...
Well, that's where it was coming from.
Yeah.
Well, can we think of a better word?
No, few people have referred to that term "commercial," and it, you know, and it just seems to me you could say, you know, what, multi-family residential, or, you know...
Multi-family developments, multi-family...
Well, does that include things like cabins keeping, all of those, right? You would call those, they aren't MF zoned, but they are multi-family developments.
Maybe just say multi-family developments?
Well, I mean, I wasn't at the work session, so I'm sure you covered all this ground, but to me, where this is, where leaf blowers themselves are most impactful are on smaller properties that are tied together.
Oh, yeah, that was the main...
So, you know, to me, if we look at something like, say, two acres or more, do we even have to specify that it's only for co-ops? Or is it okay to have, you know, larger residential properties, use them as well, because you're not really bothering your neighbor if you choose to do it? I don't know if you guys already...
Oh, so just, is it, does a acre...
Just say you have two acres or more.
Is that enough, or do we need to be more specific about the...
But then, but then people living on one acre would be prohibited from using, you know, that's a pretty large piece of property.
Well, I think that two acres might be too big.
They're one acre, you know, whatever, whatever that number is, I think it's...
Well, we had talked about it, which is where we came up with the half-acre number, but I understand, you know, your point, you know, on the...
But there's lots of...
One held out, yeah.
Right. That's where we were sort of making the exception, because we thought that if it was any bigger than that, there wouldn't have needed it.
Right. But I'm just saying, do we wanna make an exemption just based on property size? Because I don't think that you, that people are annoyed as much if it's all quarter-acre lots next to each other, you're gonna hear it, but...
But there are issues, you go ahead.
It might be a distinction without a difference, but if you're, if you own, if your house sits in the middle of a two-acre lot, it's gonna have a lot less impact on your neighbors than if you live in one of the Fieldpoint houses where, you know, you have a lot of neighbors, but presumably everybody at Fieldpoint wants this exemption, so...
Well, we had a letter from someone at Fieldpoint who complained about the noise.
Right, we did, yeah, I know, there was a dual message there.
Well, I mean, I think that's not unusual to see a property association's management not necessarily in sync with all the owners of the properties. You know, you can't, not everyone is lockstep, so there's gonna be differences of opinion.
But wouldn't that be handled internally, so?
It has to be handled internally.
If we permitted it, then they would have to decide, are they going to impose limits on when, periods of time, et cetera?
Exactly. I mean, I like the idea that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was just gonna ask, you know, what are the other communities doing? What's these things doing where they have a total ban on leaf blowers, but what about their large residential community?
Well, you know, they're large residential, they don't have a lot of large residential, and they're not that leafy. No, there's ones on Broadway that you can see that.
This one's right before...
They're right Hastings Desert, yeah.
No, there's ones right next to the, to the town hall, it's to the...
And something near Warburton, where it comes onto Broadway.
Because, remember, Fieldpoint and some of these other places are clustered, and they're clustered to keep the housing closer together, so that there's more green around it. Now, that's not true of... Half Moon, yeah. I would say that the apartments in Hastings are more likely, so it's never been an issue, but no, there was no, there was no exception.
So it sounds like you're not disagreeing that there needs to be some accommodation for whatever we wanna call them, these, you know, multi-family? And is it sufficient to do it by size of lot, or do we need to be more specific that we're exempting these commercial houses?
Well, can I just, as a throwback to whenever, was it two years ago? Whenever we first did this discussion?
First, many years.
Well, whatever, it was the last time around, before we dusted it off. There were some landscapers who talked to me about how in larger properties like Matheson Park, you know, people are very persnickety about care, and there's oftentimes, they felt that they would need to have some sort of exemption to really manage the customers properly. But that's a case where you've got fairly large properties and fairly big distances, not everywhere in Matheson Park, so... So I think an exemption based on property size, but not necessarily on type of...
That's kinda what I was saying. It's more just the overall size. Because again, I think, I mean, I guess you could have someone with a two-acre lot that has a bunch of houses around it somehow, but, you know, there's not, I mean, the biggest complaint we got was kind of in a neighborhood with smaller lots. I mean, you know, even to me, like she said, it was twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, or whatever. It seemed a little, like, overdone to me, but it's almost like you limited the timing and the number, the frequency, like, you can't blow your lawn every morning, or something like that.
But also, the number of units, if you see this number B, ten B, we added that, I think. I don't know if that was added when you were here, or when...
I don't think so, no, I think it was added after.
Yeah, because we talked a lot about how...
They had the teams of them, that's much louder, yeah.
It's much worse when you have three or four of these things going at one time. When you have smaller property, you don't need that.
No, exactly. Because I think that the other side of the coin is that if we say, you know, people, it's still great, but you're gonna have, you know, four guys raking for, you know, call it fifteen minutes as opposed to doing it five, so that's gonna get, you know, hassles. There's gonna be a cost involved, and I don't think, and I think the cost will be a lot greater for a two-acre property than it would be for a, you know, point oh-nine acre property, or something.
I just have to make one minor correction. I have never seen a grounds crew use a leaf blower for less than, for five minutes.
Sure, but they stay on them all the time, too, yeah.
It's like, you know, it's like, we chase that last leaf around.
No, you're absolutely right.
So it's like a leaf Olympics, usually goes on much longer.
I mean, it's, I know that the law fits under the noise section. That's what we're looking at, and that's what the major complaint was, but we had quite a bit of a discussion about the effects of blowers on the quality of the soil, and, you know, the way in which it affects asthma and blowing the actual road surface, and the bits that are blown up, and the effect on kids, and so, I guess I would like to keep it as tight as possible. And the kinds of people who have written to us that have serious concerns, like Caesar and these other large places, I think we should make accommodations for them, but I don't think we need to loosen it up even greater, because, you know, those people aren't asking that we do, so...
I don't feel like we've gotten a lot of impact input. The last time around, I spoke into a lot more people, a lot more people said, you know, if I do it myself and I have an acre, and it's gonna take me, if I do it myself and I have to rake, it'll take me all day. It takes me an hour if I do it to blow.
Right, but there's also, it's electric, it's only gas power, you can do the kind where you plug in.
I haven't heard anyone say they like those, though.
I made the mistake.
And then there's the, you know, the issue of, you know, is the absolute pristine grass look, you know, something that...
To be honest, I don't wanna legislate, you know, states and laws.
No, I don't either, but I do think we wanna be concerned about, you know, health and that kind of issue, but if we put it this, if we loosen it, if we change it, I mean, why not wait until someone says, hey, we need to make this different? What do we have to change from where it is now? Why isn't it okay the way it is?
I'm not sure, it may be, but it's satisfying. One of the points that Half Moon made was that they need to clear away debris after storms, for example. It's not just, you know, beautification of the yard, because then you're, it's a question of, my need, my desire for pristine yard, you know, competes with your kids' need for nap. That's, you know, competing goods, but if it's a matter of, you know, safety of the community, that they need a broader window of opportunity to use these, which is general maintenance of the grounds where multiple families live. So I'm just not sure this does it.
We have...
I think Caesar's point was that it was the, I'm sorry, it was...
We have the emergency...
Yeah, right, it was the emergency thing, because the sidewalks were slippery.
Okay.
And they wanted to get rid of it, and so we did that.
Okay.
That's why I'm saying, what's wrong with the way it is?
Well, we don't have a, I don't think we have something that allows either Half Moon, North or South, or Fieldpoint to, they're, they both come to us with a management concerns because of the cost of trying to, and whether it's even doable in, you know, in terms of logistics. So I don't think we've addressed that.
Okay, so that's the part, but large property owners with, say, two acres have not come to us and said...
Not this iteration, last iteration, they had come to us, that's what I'm...
Maybe they are more...
No, I'll send out an email blast as well, like I did last time, like the solar stuff.
Right, yeah.
Because we haven't gotten, frankly, too much feedback on this.
But I don't see the point of actually, I don't see the, I mean, using the argument that there's, at least, we could... I don't know if it's better to quantify it based on type, i.e. it has to be multi-family, or not. I just, you know, that could be an additional hoop. I mean, if you wanna start with that as an additional restriction, you know, for, I don't know what, two acres of greater multi-family, then they can have, you know, they have an exception to this. I'm willing to start with that and see if someone argues backwards from there.
Right, that's what I'm, that's kind of where I'm going, Mark.
But then those people that are multi-family, that have large residences, you know, Matheson Park, Arslay Park, would have to come back to us and tell us, hey, that's not gonna work for us.
Right, or, like I said, maybe they've turned over a new leaf and have a different attitude.
That's actually kind of painful.
That sounds reasonable, that was the point I was trying to make, as well.
I just want, I just, I don't think it makes a difference based on the direction you seem to be heading in, but that one responding to an emergency wasn't the draft that Caesar responded to. So apparently that language wasn't another...
No, because he was talking more about just, it was a storm, it was after, when removing snow.
That one responding to an emergency wasn't added, that was in the last...
We added "when removing snow" in response to his discussion that it was easier to get rid of the...
But that was, I think that was the previous round.
Oh.
But anyway, okay.
And then he talked about...
I guess it's a, maybe just post-regular storm isn't quite responding to an emergency, but it may be irrelevant, that distinction will be irrelevant if you had it the direction.
So one of the letters, I can't remember if it was one of Caesar's letters or not, was implying that if we didn't allow leaf blowers to be used, then we would have to use something that was even louder and noisy.
Oh, the big lawnmower, kind of thing?
Yeah, that they were gonna use.
That was the Fieldpoint.
So was there a way through...
Caesar also brought that up.
Right, I mean, we shouldn't allow that level of noise.
Is it, noise is noise, right? It's...
Yeah, he raised that issue.
Caesar did, too?
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, if we are only limiting gas-powered leaf blowers, but we're not limiting push blowers that make as much or more noise, and we're forcing them to use that.
Hold on, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, I'm distracted, I didn't get how you got from, I'm trying to see what landscape, commercial-level electrics there are, sorry.
No, that's okay, no one seems to think that they were.
Well, I only saw one that isn't a commercial-level product so far, but I wasn't looking at this dealer. So I'm sorry, how'd you get to where you actually...
So my point was that at least Caesar and maybe at Fieldpoint, they had sort of said that if we didn't allow them to use leaf blowers to clear their sidewalks, that they'd be forced to use...
Mowers.
Mowers.
Yeah. See, that's, that's, the only thing I can say is, and did we say it here, but I do think that even though it's a Department of Redundancy Department kind of thing, I do think it's really important to call out that the village will expect the equipment to conform to the latest level standards that Westchester County requires for home improvement licenses. In other words, we wanna make sure that everyone realizes they can't bring in this, you know, piece of junk blower from ten years ago and expect anyone to be happy with it, you know? So I think somehow we should have some language, even though I know it's all subsumed, I just think we should have some explicit language that basically says we're, you know, we're expecting them to conform to the latest, whatever the standards the Westchester County calls out for the EPA engine standards.
I brought up some of the info at the work session from Westchester County, and I had to think, Mary Ann, you had some comment, I think, about not relying on the regulations of the county and that, do you recall? But that, those were the kinds of things I was thinking about, I mean, they were... I even brought up that, when I read those regulations from Westchester County, it said that if you are a lawn care operator in Westchester County, you are supposed to be registered with Westchester County, you're supposed to have a number on the side of your truck at a certain place.
If you listen to talk about anything about the equipment itself, you have to go into the exact, into the actual regulation, the Westchester County regulations, where they specify things about the engines that are allowable for mowers and for blowers.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is, if you have somebody who didn't even go to Westchester County to get registered and get their number, then really dealing with a fly-by-night organization that somebody should be able to call up and say, yeah, these guys are doing this on my lawn, but they're also not even registered and allowed to operate in Westchester County, and they probably have really crummy, old equipment as well.
I guess my concern is... Yeah, well...
Well, I do think that, as from an enforcement perspective, you know, just using a blower is obvious to the police, whoever's gonna end up enforcing this, as well as if they're not registered with the county, that should be obvious. So, you know, in Connie's, in Connie's point, if they don't have a number, that's an easy thing for them to write up, as opposed to saying, you know, let me compare this to a...
Let me check the size of it.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that, it's a Department of...
Are you, are you allowed to do that work unless you're licensed?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I read from Westchester County, if you wanna go back.
No, I understand that, you know, maybe somebody only wants to hire somebody licensed.
No, no, you're not supposed to do the work without being licensed.
You need somebody to check that.
I'm pretty sure it's a violation.
I'm gonna take a wild guess here, that an awful lot of the smaller guys who go around with one or two leaf blowers are not licensed. And do we want to go there in this, which is just trying to limit the noise level?
Well, it's, I...
You have to decide what you're trying to achieve.
I think that's an issue here, that, yeah, it's a noise level thing. I mean, I was gonna make a broader statement, let me make one statement, then back into this one for a second.
Sure.
I thought whatever we do as a resolution should probably state more about the impacts of leaf blowers beyond noise. I think we should address the particulate matter asthma issue, the effect on the soil quality and soil health and that kind of thing, as a preamble. It could be a bunch of whereas's, but the only real handle that we have that we can really address this on a simple matter is as a noise ordinance. But, you know, we can still wrap it in more information for the public, I guess I'm trying to say, through our, through our actual resolution.
Connie, are you relying on this thing, this thing from the notice to home contract?
That was part of what I found on Westchester County. There, I think I had some of...
If you're licensed, you have to do this, and I don't, I would be surprised. You think only licensed people are allowed to work?
You can be fined for driving a landscaper's truck without a license on it. If you're, if, the problem is, local police don't necessarily enforce it either.
I don't see, okay.
But the county police, if they see you, it's a pretty heavy, hefty fine, I think.
Yeah, 'cause it was not...
Yeah, I think there were more pages in that, on the Westchester County, I mean, please, somebody else checked it out. What I found on Google.
I was looking quickly, I don't think it was only plumbing and electrical licenses, I saw, but it's possible it's in there.
Yeah.
No, there's definitely, it's not so much a lance, it's a home improvement...
Yes, it falls under that, but it's, they... Yes, it falls under that, but it's, they, they list that as one of the things.
And you have to have it as a landscaper.
Under home improvement. I read the whole list.
In fact, you have to, depending on the number of trucks, each truck has to have a license on it, and there's a.
All right, so we're kind of mixing up. I get Janice's point.
No, 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 but that's a different point. Mark wants to get in there, and it, and you can say, I mean, there's no reason that you can't say, you know, add a provision that they have to, you know, meet whatever the county standards are, figure that out. Okay, that's one issue, and that, that can be added, I think it's a good add, but, yeah, you're right, and there's, it can be started out with.
But if, you know, it's enforcement, if nobody calls with somebody on it and they, you know.
And it gives another way to enforce it. Nobody's going to necessarily bang out the guy next door because he's not having a license tag around his neck.
Right, but if somebody says, this is the only way I can, like, and besides, they're not even, right, so maybe it could not have the negatives that you're rightfully bringing up, but have some positives in the direction I think Mark is discussing. How to, I would, I would like to add the language that, that brings in the large, I'm going to say large, the multifamily, I, I don't know again how to describe that, but that group that you know I'm talking about, to give them greater leeway, because we have heard, you know, financial things, but I, I do think.
So how much shall they weigh?
What's that?
How much shall they weigh?
Yeah, I know, that's the question.
And during all, during 12 months of the.
Right, right, no, I, I think I, I, I would, as, as little as needed, but also you can live right at the edge of that property too. You can be the next homeowner and.
You could live in that property.
You could, yes, and you could hate it, and you could be up, well, I think you were trying to say if you were in Field Point, they have to argue internally.
Right.
Yeah, you have to make your point to your association.
And your association has to agree what's reasonable limitations. There is no way we can solve the problem that somebody has the next house after the development. We cannot solve that problem.
Well, they have the.
We have to make reasonable guidelines that apply as broadly as possible.
But here is 100 feet to the nearest residence. Why not say the same thing?
Well, that's why they work for, for Half Moon.
100 feet is the next.
They have people very close, I was just very close by.
No, I'm thinking of people, okay, well.
So that, you know, the next private home to, to Half Moon is not 100 feet away.
Right, but.
So.
Right, so everybody's.
What was the, I'm sorry, what was the, let me try to get my head back on this whole thing. Larry, you were talking about that there would not only be a risk, you were proposing not only for like Half Moon, there would be a restriction, a time-based restriction, not a calendar-based.
You have to discuss that.
Were you talking about something that we initially?
I don't.
I think Caesar, Caesar was talking about.
Limited times. It's also a number of times.
There's an exception, but only, and you can.
See, I think that that's even, that's even nicer than narrowing the window down, put a time limit on it, and then have people come back and complain to us that doesn't, before we pass it, that it doesn't give us enough time to do what we need to do.
Right, right, yeah, so he had.
Well, I don't think he was objected to the time limitations we had set up. He was objecting to the fact that the, it was the cleanup periods, because they need to use this all year long.
Right, but there was, there was, there's no, there's no time, if we give them an exception, just a blank exception.
Right, right, it would be an exception with a time.
During that, during that period of May 15th to September 15th, it's only.
Only during certain hours.
It's only 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM or something like that.
Except in emergencies, if there's a fallen tree branch or.
Well, if there's an emergency, that would stay.
It'll be an exception.
Yeah, because here's the thing from Caesar, and that result would be an exception for commercial properties, okay, over X acres, and a limit of hours for those commercial properties.
I think that's perfectly reasonable.
Yeah, four hours a day.
Four hours a day, and you can make it X number of hours, you don't have to say, I
think, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, because it depends when the event occurs, or they're trying to sequence their people or whatever.
He suggested 9:00 AM to noon or whatever, that's why.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, he, even, that, you know, we confirm the limit, which I like. The exception has a narrower window.
But they need, right, but they need, we need to figure out just how to say we're making an exception for the large residential, multifamily, commercial, whatever the words are that we need to describe it.
During those times when they would otherwise be totally banned, that they have the right to do that for limited hours.
It's one of the exceptions.
Yeah.
For limited hours, but.
Yeah, all right, can we do that?
We're all good on this one, then.
I don't know, Larry. I don't know, but do we want to say a limited number of hours, or do you want to say times? I think, frankly, I think saying a particular.
Times are easier, because it's easier to report.
Yeah, so people know, now they are.
The neighbors know what to expect.
Yes.
You can't, you can't enforce three times a week. There's no, how, how do you know that?
No, right.
The patrol officer has no knowledge.
So, yeah, so you make, yeah, yeah, that's good. Let's try that language.
Monday to Friday.
See what, you know, people come and have problems with, you know, you're talking about, maybe we'll change it again.
Yeah, because we've had, we've had a lot of complaints from a larger neighborhood, so.
Right, so it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, complaints about.
About the noise.
Or wanting, we haven't got any feedback.
Right, right, we don't know what's going on at the.
We've heard from a couple people in Squirrel Park and a couple people in really big properties, commercial properties.
Right, if I were going to write a letter, I would write a letter for my property, it's not, you know, it's more like Squirrel Park.
The other, and I'll, I'll fix it up. Then the other was the fines. You said you wanted a particular fine, and then people said, well, what about the fines for this, what about the fines for that?
Maybe Shandra can.
Then you're opening, I mean, you want to open it all up, you open it all up, you have to have a discussion, you know, about what fines are appropriate for what, or do you just want to fix this one and, you know, deal with the other ones.
Yes, we.
I'd like the, just make it 100 the first time, then 250 and.
That'd be, I mean.
Yeah, if we have a range, then who decides? Is this a $50 fine and that's a $75 fine?
Yeah, no, but the, the issue was some of the other things and the noise ordinance, maybe the.
Yeah, the chipping fine was.
Chipping is the other one, but.
We can go back and look at those separately.
All right, so leave this the way it is, but then fix.
I'll pull this whole thing off.
Right, then fix those. All right, okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
All right.
All right, so now for really, the really difficult stuff?
Can I just say that there are in fact professional-grade rechargeable handheld blowers that can actually get up to 125 miles an hour wind speed, which is equivalent to the gas ones.
And are they quiet or?
I'm going to shut the internet.
They actually don't have the DBs listed.
Twice as loud as the.
Right, let's change the law and make it worse. People get it bad.
One, one more question.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So are, are commercial probably, are the storms on Main Street are responsible for clearing snow in the morning? Not allowed to use a leaf blower to clear that snow off?
Wonder who we stop?
I think it's, I think it's okay.
You look pretty.
Yeah, they snow, they snow till I.
Mark and I had a lot of input on this. These, these people were great, I thought.
All right.
Green?
Yes, or, you don't have to.
What are you blaming us for?
Blue.
All right.
There's green on the trails, and then you'll see the reddish part is Irvington Town Hall Theater, and there are things here, it goes with their.
Can I just, you know, you follow what's going on in the high school?
Yeah, but that's about it. Whether or not you want a growling.
No, it's about the color that they changed, as much as anything else.
Oh, yeah, but that's the high school.
No, but that included people who have lived in Irvington and gone through the school. I'm telling you, I just follow, and I'm not even, the senior citizens center was up in arms, because all those people had gone through the high school and were shocked that the color was going to change, that they.
Well, we've never had wayfinding signs in Irvington of any color.
Yeah, but to say that we don't know that Irvington is.
So we're not breaking any tradition.
Street signs.
Right.
Everything's green.
I mean, I understand wanting to have different signs for the trails.
Yes, that's, yeah, that has a lot to do with the state parks.
And I understand.
They'd rather have, with everything else green, it doesn't ever go.
Yes. Maybe we could have this green.
No, two, I get that, no two-tone signs, please. Let's just, let's just do it all green if that's the case, because whatever, if this, if we're trying to preact it. What am I going to say? This, run it after people and say.
I love the little clock tower. I love the designs and the signs. I like the different uses for the, the different shapes.
Yeah, the way they don't jut out. There are all kinds of things, like, you know, there's not a lot of space, so you have to have them up and down, like on, there are places on Broadway where there's hardly any space to put something.
There was a lot of thought. I was really impressed with.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
The folks that worked on this.
Didn't you say that a while ago, that different possibilities?
Oh, yeah, and then there was amalgam of two or three that realized, and then she put them together and took elements of one with another.
So kind of, I guess it was kind of considered a kind of a Tiffany-esque design element to some of them.
Right.
The little open, yeah, the open work we saw. So it makes you think of, perhaps deco or something, although I guess you wouldn't call Tiffany deco, but anyways, makes you think of some kind of stainless or something, crafty.
So I, I love the designs, I love the variety of designs, but I would prefer to have it green.
I could take the bargain blue. I'll allow bargain blue.
Park blue might be good, that could really draw people's attention to it.
Well, is that not much park?
No, of course not.
Do we have town hall park? We don't have town hall park.
I got to say, I'm a little bit hesitant, you know, and I know, I'm late to this game here, everybody's, everybody's put a lot of work into this. This I'm a little hesitant.
What part are you looking at, Larry?
The gateway sign.
I have to tell you, if you go look at the two locations they'd be at, there's really constrained horizontal space for those signs.
Right.
So.
So where would those end come?
When you're on Broadway.
At either end of Broadway.
And you're almost at Sunnyside Lane, there's almost no space to put a gateway sign, because it would stick out or would go into, there's no real estate there. So some of these are, are reasons why they're that.
Oh, that's what you want, understatement.
Right.
Just to, just for the, you know, you know, you're entering Irvington, but we don't have to scream to them, they're entering Irvington.
I know.
So.
You know, we have no, you know, Irvington signs on any exit, you know, with any highway right now directing people. You can find Irvington if you want to find it.
It says welcome Irvington.
We're going to put this down at Cyrus Field Road too, down at the intersection of the Sun.
That's.
That's my turn.
That could be blue down there.
Listen, I know a lot of people put a lot of time into this and I'm coming late to this part.
So.
So I'm trying to hear Larry's, was there a concern? I wanted to hear the possible concern. You had a concern about something?
The concern I had was the way, the gateway sign.
I see. And.
If you really want to get here, you can find it.
Well, two things.
Well, he wanted to be a little less, a little more understated.
Because right, right now the sign says welcome to Irvington.
But it also has Washington Irving on it, and it's green, and it's kind of like just real as carved wood and gold signs, so it's kind of oldie fashioned.
Right.
So.
We call that historic here.
Oldie fashion.
But the point is, this, this obviously is, this, I mean, my take is, there's not a reason that one couldn't, you don't have to use this just because it's in the inventory of design. You can decide, we can decide collectively that we'll keep our existing oldie fashioned signs at both places. You know what I'm saying? But some future generation may come along and go, you know, for the spaceport, Irvington Spaceport, we want to have this sign.
And that's exactly what the consultants who designed the high school crest did and said, and everything you're saying is what they said, and.
They did know about the spaceport.
And the school board did not. Said, apologized to the entire community, saying, we're sorry that we didn't take input and listen, and they, everything came off the board, and they started all over again.
But before we go that far, is there anything else besides, we've got two things. We've got the gateway signs and the color. Is there anything else that people find questionable? Because I, I actually find this pretty handsome.
I happen to like the.
The clock tower.
Clock tower as a.
It's very nice. I think, personally, the only other thing is, if we were to do that, I would say, maybe look at the trail signs, and if we wanted to differentiate them, maybe they should go toward that.
The brown.
The brownish.
I was saying, is there any, any consistency with, with trail signs through the River towns on the Aqueduct Trail?
Trail signs.
That's put out by the New York State Parks Department.
Does it say they have to be green?
I don't know, but that was specifically just green. I don't, we had.
So that is the green of their, their, their E B thing.
Yeah, the Parks Department.
Which I thought was nice.
Which may or may not be the green of Irvington, I'm pretty sure it isn't.
Oh, well, that's, I, I would not go down on a long count on blue. I thought it was a nice change. If everyone else on the board is feeling hesitant about it, then we should not go forward with something that's going to be a lightning rod to begin with. There's too much, because then the whole design gets discolored, the whole approach becomes discolored in the public eye. So if we're worried about that, then we should just say, these things need to be green and be done with it.
But I, I would like to put it out as, you know, I, I mean, I wouldn't oppose it if that was a message from the community that we've been, we were known as green, we want to continue to be known as green, we're committed to it.
Look at the code book of the Village of Irvington's green.
Right, but, yes, but you could also say, you know, this is a fresh look at that, and that's a little.
Okay, so here's my solution. Here's my problem. If we put it out blue and people don't like blue.
Yeah, right, we can change it.
No, you've lost the public war at that point. You've lost it. Everyone will reject it because, oh, that's, those are the blue signs. What I would suggest is either we give it out green, or we give out a version that's green and a version that's blue, that's identical in all respects, and just say, here's our signage, what color do you think is the best? What color do you think is the best? And, you know what I'm saying? So we don't have that, the argument, because I've seen this too much in other places.
You lose them right away because they're like, they don't even get us because they're in all green.
You messed with my green. I don't like that sign.
And so the whole thing becomes...
Finally, we get out of green. Thank God.
But you know what happens? Colly, what happens is the opposite. You give them both sets of colors, and they come back and they say the majority of the committee elects blue.
I'm agreeing here, Mark. I'm agreeing with you. I think you should put them both out.
Then we start without fair.
We're all agreeing here, so we don't need to argue about this anymore.
Right. We'll put them both out as, let the public look at it and chime in.
So we talked about all street signs in the Village are gonna...
But it has to go very fast. I mean, I think that input has to be fairly fast because we want to start using them in the, now in the project in the summer with the aqueduct July.
I don't think it's that big of a thing. I mean, why can't we just basically have the next...
There's time to recover.
Making this all green as a second version is probably a very easy thing to do in their CAD software.
Let's do it. Let's put them both out there and let people look at them.
And then...
Have a survey online.
Maybe our next regular session, if people come in and comment on that, I don't know.
Right, whatever, we'll sometimes stand, you know, in the next, whatever.
We do have the one issue that is going to be potentially a red flag for some people will be the vertical Irvington sign.
We'll see if anybody...
Yes, I think one thing, I remember one time I got a parking ticket, and I said, well, how come we didn't say no overnight parking? And they say, well, Irvington's always try to have as few signs as possible. Because we don't want sign pollution.
Right, right.
That's what the judge told me.
And then you just look it in the code book. You could find where you could park.
And I said, well, where's it say no overnight parking? He said, right as you come in, it says... You know, so I think that, you know, obviously this is a shift, you know, and I think it's consistent with what other people are doing. But, you know, the ones that, you know, I think I agree with the gateway sign almost seems like too much of a gateway. And the identification signs also seem kind of big to me. Like, it's not like we have, you know, like the McVicker House, the sign's as big as the house, practically. You know, it's, it's, you know, so I, again, I think...
I think the sizes of the text have to do with whether you're pedestrian. I mean, there's, there's a lot of information that we learned from this consultant about if you're driving, it has to be this big. If you're walking, it can be this big. There's a whole science of it.
That's what's said in that sign, Brian, is it's visible from drive-by, not just walk-by.
Right, so...
So otherwise it could be the one size down.
You know, I mean, I see the pedestrian sign versus the particular sign, but...
So that's...
Well, you know, but...
I mean, it depends how many of these we're gonna have, too. I forget.
Well, for the place signs, there's only going to be a few, and some, there's actually one that's not here that's a design for the, of a similar fashion. Was that a banner or was that a place sign for the theater that used their...
Yeah, their logos.
Their red...
They have it, you see it in the little one, and they had it in another version, too. Right?
Yeah, I don't remember the material well.
So I guess the thing is that there's only a few places, the library, Village Hall, maybe the rec center, that would be getting these, they're really meant for municipal place signs. So there wouldn't be that many of them?
These you're talking about?
Yeah.
Now, for the, it's going to add a few things here, replacement.
Yeah, and the spreadsheet that gets into all the glory detail.
So do you think we can, is it like a six-week time to, or less than that, or four weeks or something? Put it out there as these are the two colors, let us know.
Have them available in your, you know, email account?
Yeah, something like that.
Well, it's easier to put them online, too.
Yeah, put them online and put them up there and let people have a way of responding.
Okay.
Okay?
You know, I did a field trip this weekend.
What about having the results announced at Celebratory Day?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Why don't we announce the winner, the color, the winner of the Color Wars at Celebratory Day? Okay. We will also have a lot of people here that day, hopefully, and, you know, for those who haven't weighed in yet, we can...
Oh, they can't, right, they're not going to weigh in and we can't announce.
Which color of smoke comes up?
Coming out of your leaf blower.
My battery-operated leaf blower.
If it's smoking, you're in trouble.
All right, well, Larry can propose a, you know, like a six-week way of doing it, a month, a six-week way of doing this. Okay, good.
Reports of board, standing committees, officers, justice of the A's on reports. Something on size, perhaps?
No, I'm just going to let it go because we had an extensive announcement for the video. One thing, I wanted to mention that the last farmer's market, I guess we probably previously mentioned this, but the Tree Commission was there with Davy's Tree Care? A Bartlett, Bartlett, right. They're part of Davy's, right. And they were giving out oaks. They were giving out pin oaks, red oaks, and white oaks. And the winner is, for those who didn't know, red oaks is the winner. And by the time I got there...
There were no green oaks, sir.
There, well, that's tough. By the time I got there, I had a sample of some pin oaks and some white oaks that I could adopt, which I did. But anyways, a lot of people were adopting them and taking them home to plant. They were all kind of bare root.
Yeah, like this.
Saplings, about this big, and so, you know, it'd be fun to see what happens over the next couple of years if people can keep them alive. I guess the biggest thing is to plant them in deep, with enough soil in a container, keep them watered.
They take secrets.
Oh, you can grow them. Yeah, you don't want to put them out yet because, you know, if you have deer pressure, they're still too small. But so that's what the Tree Commission did. I thought that was great, and everyone seemed to enjoy it.
Oh, it's great.
Anyways, though, I just brought that up really quickly. I just want to say the Tree Commission is looking for additional members, and so is the Environmental Conservation Board, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Doc? Now, I feel I have to read all of these because Joe said he'll release another 20 that he left off.
Oh, least of those.
So there's one more opportunity for early bird registration for the summer day camp this Wednesday, May 3, from 3 till 7. You can still register after that, but you'll miss the early bird special. Irvington Woods Committee has several special and important events on the schedule. Spring in Nature Day is Saturday, May 13. Dave's wife, Al, will be leading people to the hermit's grave on hikes. You will also be able to build a birdhouse, make a flower herb box. The first annual garden party fundraiser is Sunday, June 4, 5 till 7. Live music, beer, wine, snacks included. There'll be a flyer handed out. The annual sustainability day for the eighth grade class from Irvington Middle School will be Thursday, May 25, at the Ohio Nature Center, from 9 a.m. till noon. Irvington Spring Fest has been spoken about again. It's Sunday, May 20. Special thanks to all who volunteered this weekend to help to clean the Irvington Trails. Special thanks to the boys varsity baseball team, who worked on the trails on Sunday with Coach Donardo and Coach Toulon. Next R P A C meeting is this Wednesday, May 17, at the rec center. Irvington Woods Committee will meet Thursday, May 18, 7 p.m. at the Ohio Nature Center. Face Committee will meet this Wednesday, May 3, 7 p.m. at the rec center to continue their plans for Spring Fest. Next meeting for the Community Advisory Board is Tuesday, May 16, at 8 a.m. 2017 park permits are now available. Please leave your dog on leash. I will say, I was in the woods walking up to the nature center. Dog was on the leash this weekend. And one last thing, hold on. The Housing Committee will be meeting on, no, on the 23rd. Wednesday, Tuesday, May 23, 7:30 p.m. in the Tiffany Room.
Mostly, I gave you my announcements already, but the Highway Department, from Greg, he did attend County Recycling Seminar, so I'm sure he'd be up on all the latest that might be coming down, could be a part of whatever we put in the tax bill. Maintained winter equipment, repaired spring and summer equipment. There was a catch basin repair on West Clinton Avenue Extension. Repaired a storm damaged curb on Gray Rock Paris, filling puddles with the, that we...
Pothole killer.
The pothole killer, yes, it's called.
The pothole killer was in town?
Yeah, the killer was in town. Yeah, but they did a lot. And then Jim Englishby, of course, reading water meters, spring maintenance of the water facilities, getting, locating, inspecting the sewer mains in Ardsley Park East. And then there was a broken sewer poke, this broken sewer pipe on West Clinton Avenue near South Buckout. Oh, I saw them around there, yes. Fire hydrant flushing to begin next Tuesday, May 9. And the only other thing, Mark, I don't think you mentioned the planting of the Arbor Day tree.
Oh, I forgot, thank you.
Right, and I was there, and Mark was there, and Brenda was there, and Larry was there, and Alan Richardson, the chair of the Tree...
Commission.
Was there, and Greg, of course, and Guy Pardie from Carob Trees.
Right, the tree was donated by Carob Trees.
Right, so it was a very nice, we have some pictures. I have some others, but I think, I don't know, Larry took some, or Brenda took some, or somebody took some besides me.
I was waiting for one.
I got, okay, I got them. I got some in here, but I haven't edited them well yet.
Yeah, let's get one posted just for, you know, fun.
Okay. I think maybe Alan also had a camera. His might have been better. All right, that's, you know, I think that's my report.
Excellent.
I don't really have nothing, just a reminder again, May 16, the school budget and school board vote. We are a working community. Get out there and do it, people.
Next up is Village Ministerial Report.
I attended a meeting about the countywide shared services initiative. It was only modestly useful, but there'll be more about that to come, I'm sure. So we'll all see what we're getting into. The timeframes are very accelerated, so we'll be learning about it soon enough.
Can I reach out to the county? They're still in the planning mode as well, since it really falls on them.
We also were formally notified that we received an $850,000 grant for the construction of sidewalks on Station Road and for Main Street intersection improvements. And hopefully it helps us salvage another $120,000 for handicap curbs on Main Street. So we'll see what happens.
Village Clerk Treasurers Report.
Want to report that Larry and I have been working on the capital budget. It's a busy month now, May, the last month of our budget, and closing our books, and our tax bills.
Village Attorneys Report. Public comment.
When do we start talking about the capital budget? I'm sorry.
Well, we hope to have something at the work session next week.
Okay, great.
Hi, Dave's wife, Al. I wanted to attend the leaf blower discussion and would like to, since we're now out into public comment, be able to comment on that. In ways this is particular in my world. But anyway, I like what, I very much appreciate that you're trying to tackle this problem. A couple comments. Janice, I was particularly interested in your commenting about the licensing issue, and I would like to add to that, that there are, sure, a number of smaller vendors who do this work that may not have licenses, but may also very well, may not have documented workers on their crews. So I would hate to end up in situations where we're calling the police on people who may end up being undocumented, and then we're putting our police and our enforcement people in a more difficult situation. So I don't think that's the way to solve the problem by addressing the licensing, and I agree with you on that. The single biggest thing I find missing, though, in your regulation, which I think would solve a lot of problems, is a number of communities address the issue by decibel level. And the standard regulation is so many decibels at 50 feet. That there is a requirement that you be under, the general thing that's going out there from progressive communities are 60 to 70 decibels at 50 feet. So if it's over that, you violate the law. If you're under that, it's okay. This solves the whole problem with your acreage. I don't care how many acres you have. If you're on the edge of your acreage, on your, my slot over here, and, you know, my property is here and I'm having my luncheon, well, it can be, just because you own three acres, I don't want to be disturbed while you're on the edge. So that solves it. Now, having said that, Mark is right. There are commercial electric machines now, just in the last couple of years, which, they are significantly quieter. No, they do not make more noise. They make much less noise. And they are available. So particularly for the small homeowner, they're ideal now. You know, you have battery-operated ones that are great, and the small homeowner, you can buy an electric with your cord, just like you can with your lawn mower. So those are great, and they don't need to be regulated. Mark's issue on particulates. You should dig on two-stroke engines. They're a disaster. Two-strokes are polluting just themselves. Particulate matter out of two-stroke is significantly greater than a four-stroke engine.
May I just make a comment about that? First of all, that in the county regulations, two points, three. County regulations require that four-stroke engines be used. They have a date and an EPA regulatory number and all this, which is low emission and blah, blah, blah. So you're supposed to have that, you're supposed to, you sign an affidavit to the fact that you are using that type of equipment.
Who is saying that? The homeowner?
No, 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 the, we're talking about county regulations for landscapers right now.
For landscapers, yes.
The second point is that when you go to buy a new machine, one or, or whatever, you can't buy two-stroke machines at Home Depot or Lowe's. So any newer product is going to be lower emissions, obviously lower noise, lower emissions. The third is, I don't know how in the heck you go and get rid of those older products off the face of the earth, you know, in terms of realistic regulation for the village. That's my big concern. I mean, we'd like to see them all go somewhere, you know, to a dump, but, or to recycling, sir. But I'm not sure that there's any way that our police force would be able to easily ascertain just by looking at it. You know, you've got a whole nother level of determination that goes on. So that's, I don't disagree with the fact that they shouldn't be in use. It's not to anyone's benefit, but I just don't know how to clear it up. Unless we're just waiting for them to break is effectively it.
Having said that, I understand, you can limit the decibels, and if they are over a certain decimal.
We had a big discussion about...
No, I got made fun of because I said I had two D V meter apps for my phone. It would allow you to, but it's not the same as having a... The discussion you missed is that, you know, the problem is that, once the complaint...
No, I was there for this one.
I think the problem is, you know, then you're there, and it's hard, again, it's another police training and enforcement thing, because then it's like, how much is 50 feet? And, you know, I don't know, whatever. It's just, it becomes one of those issues that is very nebulous as to whether or not it's actually... See, when you have an air conditioning unit, it's kind of, as part of a C of O or something, you can actually stand at the property line with a meter and then, you know, it's a little bit different when it's a static object than when you have someone get a crew running around. So there would be a training issue. I guess that's the issue.
There would be a potential training issue. You know, diesel leaders are terribly expensive.
No, they're not, and like I said, the apps are...
And they have apps, and I don't think any of this is, we're out to, you know, have a policeman on every corner measuring every, every noise level. We're out to get the outliers, the people that are really making exceptions and who have particularly bad equipment. So, okay, well, I hear that. I wish we would consider decibels because that is the heart of the problem, how much noise is being made. And, yeah, I am worried about these larger properties and where they intersect with the smaller properties. The only final comment is, you know, do we really have to do it for that many hours on Sunday? Can we eliminate Sundays?
We said, we do.
10 a.m. before.
10 a.m. before on Sunday?
Oh, on there. Oh, I thought you said on that the other time.
Do we have to have it on Sundays at all? Is there somebody that's desperate that they need to be doing this on Sundays? I walked down the Aqueduct just two weeks ago, beautiful Sunday.
Well, I think it's there because there are people who, you know, who do their own lots, and, you know, in their own markets.
Okay, so maybe they should get an electric machine to do that. I don't know. It just, it's...
Well, we're going to have a public hearing about this.
We have a public hearing.
So, but those are all things to think about. Thanks, David.
Okay, thank you very much.
So you're, just the point is, on Sundays, eliminate totally or reduce the time to even more?
It was eliminated totally for the bigger properties, and on the other, the other, the times that it can be used
Yeah.
were eight to five Monday through Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and federal holidays, 10 to 4.
10 to 4, right, that's where it's, that's where we're getting at as of this version of it.
Public comment?
North Cap'n's Street, and about the leaf blower, I think that there are two things. One is the noise, of course, and I think your concern that perhaps other kinds of machines will be used that are just as loud and more ineffective and perhaps for longer. So I'd like to also see, I don't know, in the form of what David suggested, but it's something that would mitigate noisy machines in general, not just the leaf blowers. I mean, we do hear it a lot throughout the day, and I don't know what the machines are half the time, but... half the time, but anyway, so I'd like to see that, because I think we can mitigate the noise pollution as well as the pollution, you know, from the emissions is important for our quality of life here. So I'm glad that we're working on trying to curb this and make this a better situation. My other comment is related to the signage plan. Suggestion, actually, David, I took this, your suggestion, I kind of like it. The signs for the old Crotin Aqueduct, I would suggest perhaps if, if the Irvington signs are going to be green, or whatever we end up doing, perhaps the Crotin Aqueduct signs could be brown, or also just consider some uniformity, because they really do seem to be different throughout the villages. So I'd like to see some more uniformity on the Crotin Aqueduct signage, if possible.
I, I don't think they actually have a standard. I think they have, it's even hard to find a, a standard logo for them.
Yeah, you know, you see the O C A, and blah, you know, there's, there are all kinds, and, and maybe that's the character, you know?
Just be O C, you know, just be powerful, O C.
Yes, I mean, I had suggested the use of the aqueduct in the, the outline of the shape, the lozenge is actually the cross-section of the, of the...
Yeah.
Of the tunnel itself, of the aqueduct, which I thought was just a nice talking point, once you realize that it's gonna, but anyways, it's one of the, I don't know if it was from the state or where, one of the groups...
Friends of the old Crotin Aqueduct has that cross-section, yeah.
Okay, so, and then, you know, we were trying to make it a lot more effective in terms of actually directional and distance stuff, so much more functional for when you're on the trail. Now, what other communities do, there's no standard, I guess is what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah.
And they sort of let anybody do anything they want to.
Well, you have to ask first, I think.
But then they let you do it.
Yeah.
So that nice parent, you know?
Throw it over here, grant it over there.
Okay, but I do like that thought of the directionality, you're right. Even if it can't be uniform, at least I think having quite an improvement by giving better information, more helpful, yeah.
Be a public discussion about this, right?
Yep.
Yeah, right.
All right, thank you.
Are we adjourning?
You have action, yes.
So three, three main things. One is revising the, dusting the questionnaire off for the stormwater topic, and looking at, putting that out again. Looking into the milk carton scandal, and then...
Go ahead.
I missed out on the milk carton scandal.
Recycling, yeah.
Yeah, right.
And then the revisions to the signs, as you talked about. So you want to...
During the executive session, discuss the volunteer board, if I can get a second.
Second.
All in favor?